Welcome everyone to this May meeting of the Saginaw City Planning Commission. If you are here to present a case, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and make your presentation. We may ask you questions for clarity or for more information. A simple majority vote of the members present will decide on your request. If you're here to speak in the public comment phase of the meeting, please also come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and direct your comments to the commission. We have no time limit, but brevity is appreciated. Let's begin with the roll call.
Mr. Post.
The work of Jones.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Doane.
Here.
Nightingale.
Present.
Henley.
Here.
Bryant. There's a quorum.
Very good. First item on our agenda is, excuse me, approval of the April minutes which we have. And I did not find any changes, I would make that. Anyone have any additions, deletions, changes? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Been moved and supported. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So into our new business, the first case being the site plan review for a truss plant at Veterans Memorial Parkway for Menards.
Is this on? Good? I'm Nick Brenner with Menards, 5101 Menard Drive, Oakley, Wisconsin, 54703. I'm here tonight to present to you a site plan, a submittal, for a new plant that Menards is proposing to construct at 2100 Veterans Memorial Parkway. This is directly north across the railroad tracks from the current Menards site, which has a cross dock and concrete plant. The new proposed building here is to construct a truss manufacturing plant. It is a slab on grade plant and will be used to manufacture custom trusses for our customers. There is also going to be an extension of a rail spur. This is for what we call a reload facility. So what will happen is that we will order lumber from different parts of the country. It will ship on rail and flatbed rail cars, and it will be transferred onto flat trucks for distribution purposes to the stores in the area. So those are really the two big things that we are proposing with this new plant and this new site. And, you know, I will go into any more details about the project that you guys would like, but I'll kind of open up to you guys and have you guys direct me of what you guys are interested in me talking about here.
Did you say it includes construction of the rail spur?
Yes, we, as part of this development, we will have to construct the rail spur on the Lake State Railway. And we have submitted plans and everything to them for that, and they've been very helpful for this process. But yes, we will have to add a rail spur for this project.
Am I right that that doesn't actually show on what we're looking at here?
Um, I can walk up there and see. I have it on my plan here.
So I assume that it...
It's this, it's a few more, it's this dark black line here. So this is the rail spur right here.
Okay, all right, going right into the...
Yup, so here's the line, and it comes right in like that.
This is a driveway to the other property?
Yes, so that is the cross to go from our current property to the new site, and it is a cross. We do have a cross agreement with the railroad as well.
That's a surface crossing?
Yes.
Not an underpass?
Definitely a surface crossing.
In the photo, where is it? Attached to this, I guess I'm gonna come up here.
That's fine.
I just was trying to locate everything. The existing concrete plant, is that this property, or is it...
It's this one right here.
Veterans Memorial is right there.
Yup, so this is, this is a north-south view of the site.
Right, yeah.
So this is our current concrete plant. You can see the block we made here.
Oh, okay.
The cross agreement's gonna, the crossing's gonna go right here.
Sure, yeah.
And our new plant's gonna go about right there on the railroad. You guys can all see that.
So, does anyone have any questions?
If I could just add, sorry, Tom Miller Saginaw Future. I just was exchanging texts with the Assistant City Engineer. She's on her way, in case you have any specific questions for the city as it relates to their engineering part of the deal here. This has obviously been a big project that a lot of us have worked on, a number of city staff members. It's one of the most complicated projects that I think that we're going on our, well, Steve Black, the Racer Trust representative for Saginaw, said this is the record for extensions for a purchase agreement. I think they're on their eighth extension. I'd like to thank Menards for their patience in dealing with, and it's not been a holdup on the, on the city's behalf, it's really related to an EPA DEQ wetland mitigation project, which is part of this project. So, we understand that the city has some questions about specific details related to the site plan, which Menards is working to address with, with the city engineer. This, this project required almost a million dollars of wetland mitigation. Racer received the property in bankruptcy during the bankruptcy settlement with GM. They took on the non-productive assets. GM had always maintained that site as the nodular site. They, Racer, when they took over the property, turned off the pumps, because they didn't want to maintain pumping out the water on the site. Some phragmities grew in the DEQ, and Menards started to look at, at a project on the site, the DEQ came in and said that they were wetlands. So it's, there doesn't allow for a qualitative analysis of the, of the wetlands, so it's based on the soil, the vegetation, and the, the species that live there. So anyways, we've been working on, and again, thanks to Menards for their patience, on a mitigation plan that, that would sort of offset Menards' cost as it relates to building this wetland offsite. So, that has been a big process. I know, again, what, the D, or, Menards has dealt with some floodplain issues, because this site is close proximity to the river, and working with Racer Trust on some stormwater issues, which has also been a long-term process. But I think we're finally at the point where those two things are gonna hopefully go before council June 5th. We know that Menards needs to negotiate some final details with the city engineer, really sort of minutia details, but very important, and they're certainly going to do that. But in order to keep this project on schedule, Menards, I think, wanted to break ground two springs ago, but for the, the wetland mitigation issue. So, we're really trying to, to get all this stuff together, the conservation easement, the wetland mitigation plan, O&amp;M plan for the wetland site, site plan approval. We're also going through the brownfield process tomorrow with Yolanda's on that board as well. But we're gonna be bringing a brownfield plan to help, again, offset some of those costs. The MEDC is, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation is also playing a role in helping to offset these costs. And just to add in one further layer of complications for the site, we also had to work with GM, because they had an easement that ran bisected the site. And so we're working with their real estate folks out of Detroit to relocate their easement to access the landfill site just north of the site, to make all of these things happen. So we appreciate your patience and your consideration, and know that there are some loose ends that we need to tie up. But this is gonna be a really big economic development project for the city of Saginaw. If you, this is the old Van Poplin Block Site, if you're not familiar with it, if you drive up Veterans Memorial Parkway and look east, just five years ago, it really was in shambles, probably seven years ago. Menards has purchased that with the original intent of moving the equipment back out west, where they do most of their manufacturing. Now they have manufacturing operations around the country. We helped to put together a program with the city manager and the MEDC to entice them to purchase the building and manufacture their decorative blocks on the site. I will mention that this is their only manufacturing site in the state of Michigan, so we're really keen to make the development of this property and adjacent properties for Menards easier, because we know that once they have a foothold, we hope that they will continue to expand as, as this expansion is a testament to that. So, again, thank you for your consideration and your patience.
Question probably for Mike. The work that's gonna be done in the Wicks Park area, tell us more about that. What, what is that now? Who owns that now?
It's owned by the city of Saginaw, and working with the city manager's office. It is, it's been underutilized, so the city has actually farmed that out, actually contracted with a farmer to cut the grass, because they couldn't afford to maintain the property. It was underutilized. We were seeking a, so fundamentally, and I'm not a wetland engineer, but Miss Wander, environmental, who Menards has contracted is, and is the environmental consultant on this project along with AKD Peerless. When you find impacted wetlands that are gonna be part of a building site, there's a federal law, part of the EPA legislation, that regulates how you deal with filling in of wetlands, if you want to construct on them. And there is a mitigation process, and they can sometimes, if you want to occupy, say, one acre, they could ask you to replace it with seven acres of pristine wetland. In this case, the DEQ and the EPA, using as much latitude as they had at their disposal, recognized that the quality of these wetlands were not of the utmost and highest importance. They were essentially, used to be part of the, the nodular site and just had been unkept, and that's why they turned into wetlands. So they allowed us to, to lower that ratio. Originally, we had looked at purchasing a farm that is, needs to be in the watershed, Saginaw Bay watershed, if you're gonna do a wetland mitigation project. That kind of fell through for, for various reasons. Again, Menards had got to the point where, you know, this has to be a cost benefit for the company. They can't, this isn't a charity case. And so when you tell them you need to, to relocate, the road's gonna cost $300,000, roughly, $350,000, and to mitigate these wetlands is gonna be somewhere in the $800,000 to $1,000,000. Menards, and I don't want to speak for Menards, but the reason why they manufacture here is because they can service a good part of Michigan. They do that through their cost savings on transportation. If you add another million and a half dollars into the total project cost, it offsets those transportation benefits, and all of a sudden makes Saginaw maybe not as competitive as some of their existing manufacturing operations outside of even the state of Michigan. Luckily, and thanks to Jen Miller, who's, who's not here yet, but she is on her way, we were talking about city-owned property that might be appropriate for a wetland project. So, Yolanda and I and Phil Carwin and a number of folks have been talking about parks and recreation and trails, and I'm on the Riverfront Commission, and one of our goals is to connect Wicks Park Drive to the Ironbell Trail. And so we knew that we needed to do some things in the south end of Wicks Park Drive that needs some assistance. The city identified that area as a potential location for a wetland mitigation project. Menards came to the table and said, yes, they would construct it there, and in fact would install a, a trail through the, through the wetlands, and that will be a major component to offset the use of the wetlands on the nodular site. So it's gonna be, I think, a win-win, because we're gonna create a nice recreational feature at the south end of Wicks Park Drive. Now, the city will maintain ownership of that property in perpetuity, but this, the Menards, actually, the DEQ will have a conservation easement over that delineated wetland areas on southward Wicks Park Drive forever. So, that's kind of how these two things tie together.
Anything to add to that? Okay. Any further questions?
Just one more thing.
Yes.
So basically, you're saying modular iron was there, then they tore it down, then it turned into wetland, so you gotta reverse it.
I know, and it's really, and, and, next predecessor here, I had the chance to meet with Congressman Kilde, and I said, if you ever wanted to tackle a piece of federal legislation that really had a little bit of lack of common sense, this thing is on the river, so I'm sure 100 years ago it was a wetland, but GM had maintained the property for, you know, for decades and decades, and it was, well, the old nodular site and the parking lot. Now, the parking lot where it is today is where that new building is. They backfilled this site with just foundry fill and, and clay and such, but Racer didn't want to have those ongoing operational expenses of running the pumps, which probably were a couple hundred dollars a year. So if they would've left those pumps on, we, we probably wouldn't be having this issue. But lesson learned, and now, but it's, it's invasive species, so they found contaminated soil, the phragmities that, that the DNR's spending lots of money to burn out of all the, the parks is there. It's kind of a sad story, but ultimately, it's gonna be a good job creator for the city. They've done a wonderful job cleaning up Veterans Memorial. It's like a very nice stretch of part of the city.
I used to work at modular.
Did you? So you have some history going back on this one.
Any further comments or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion for this case.
I move that we approve case 170013. It's written.
Support. Moved and supported. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Motion carries. Next case is site plan review for a water meter building at Saint Paul Townhouses on Esprit Street.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jay Wheeler. I'm an engineer with William Kibbie and Associates. And as part of this water main project, when you upgrade meters and such, the city is trying to get away from having them down in pits, so they like them above grade in buildings. We've had several meetings going back probably over a year now with Paul Reich and with Josh Hoffman over there in Water and Sewer Maintenance with the city. And we looked at bringing the water meters above grade, and of course, anytime you do that, they're subject to the weather, so freezing in the winter becomes an issue. So rather than do some kind of a hot rock or some other system that's out there, we thought a, a nice little building, that's a block building that would be in character with the apartment complex out there, and be a secured building to house the water meters would, would help the city, and it would also help the apartment complex. So the building proposed is 13 foot four by 18 foot. It's got an eight-foot eve, and like I said, it's a block building with vinyl siding and standing seam metal roof. And it will house the heater that's required to keep it above freezing in that building. And also, there's rigid insulation on the walls to try to keep the heat in. And there'd be one light on the building above the door, just to, just to light up where the door is in case there's an issue and you have to get in there at night. There's lighting inside the building as well, along with the heater. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Does our first graphic there show the location of the building itself?
Yeah, that would be on...
1.1 is the one I'm looking at.
Oh, 1.1 is kind of an overall of the entire complex, and it shows where the existing water mains run and where the existing buildings are. The meter building on that overall page, you mind if I come up there?
Sure.
So this is, yup, this is bridge to road, and the existing water main comes in right here. It doesn't come in by the entrance, so the building will be located here.
Oh, right there, right next to that?
Yeah, and I think there was a...
It does show on page 3.1.
Oh, okay.
3.1, yeah. So there it is.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, it's a very small building. It's a small building.
Kinda gets lost in all the figures and drawings.
Yeah.
Would this, the construction of this, is that the final step in this total project, or would it be more...
It will be one of the last things that's done, yes, because all the water piping will have to be in prior to construction of the building over the, the exist, the water line itself.
Was the replacement of the system because of how old it was, or just...
No, what we did was...
Not adequate anymore, or what?
Yeah, we added a fire line. So right now, the existing system is a combined system, so the fire line and the domestic line are the same line. So we've separated the system so that the domestic line will continue to feed the apartment complex, but it'll be separate from a new fire line. And the new fire line, they said, well, if you're gonna put a new line in there, you've gotta bring the meters above grade. That was a city requirement.
So that's all the lines have been done by now?
Uh, no, it's, it's...
It's still being done?
It's still being constructed, yup.
I have a question.
Yes.
Unfortunately, I did not see where the building was when we came up here.
Oh, okay.
Is it next to the little circle?
It's little.
I'm thinking it's right there. Is that it?
Yup, yup, there you go, that little square.
Okay. I was like, I've lost it, sorry.
It'll hardly be noticed. There's other maintenance sheds and things on the property that are dwarfed by all the buildings when you drive through the complex.
Well, I am sure that we are just talking about something that is definitely required. So would I be right in thinking that?
Yeah, the city is requiring that the meters be housed in a building above grade.
State regulations, no doubt, federal regulations are part of this?
Yeah, and just common sense that you don't want the water main to freeze, so it has to be in a heated building whenever it's above the ground.
Are there any questions about this fine little building?
How long is it gonna take for you to do this? When are you gonna start?
It should start within the next month, and will only take maybe 30 days to complete, start to finish.
Any further questions? If not, I entertain a motion.
A move that we approve case 170025, as written, and it's needed by the ci, by the city.
Support. It's been moved and supported that we approved case number 0025. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
We will have our new building.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is recommendation to council for a vacation of the 500 block of South Fayette.
This is, um, this is being, I'm sorry, this is being done by Old Town Christian Outreach, and Bill Burns is here to talk a little bit about what they've been doing and the reason that they want this street vacated.
Good evening. Bill Burns, Old Town Christian Outreach Center, aka Old Town Soup Kitchen. We're requesting the vacationing of the 500 blocks of South Fayette. We purchased a building just recently with the help of the Saginaw County Foundations to house furniture and appliances, because our old area contributions have been just way of work moving. So, if we could vacation this block, it'll give us ease of movement in and out of the new building. It will also give us more room for lift truck operations, and give us more land for future development. So we're requesting a recommendation to the council of favor.
Can you give us a little more explanation of what actually happens here, the movement of people and where they are, the frequency, and what is, where they're going from where to where?
Okay, we have a facility right now at 523 Harrison, where we locate furniture, clothing, appliances, that we give away to people every day of the week practically. That has been overrun with valid donations. So, we buy property at 523 Mackinac, which is across Fayette from the main campus. So we're gonna have movement back and forth.
Is that, are you talking about the corner of Fayette and Mackinac?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, so what happens there? How are people moving?
People are gonna be moving from one area of the campus across Fayette with items that are in the Harrison area now.
You're going to be in Fayette now?
Pardon?
In Fayette? I mean, why are they going from Harrison all the way over to Fayette?
Okay, because of the overabundance of material. We intake everything at the Harrison site.
Okay.
Then we move it to the appropriate area within the campus.
Oh. So what goes to the building on Fayette?
That's gonna be storage and distribution center for appliances and furniture.
Okay, so...
Lift trucks going back and forth.
Okay. Does this go on evenly all day long, or is there some frequency or change time of day affect it at all?
Uh, yeah, basically, we operate from 10 till 5.
So it could be any time?
Yeah, yeah. And donations come in each seven days a week.
They would not come into Fayette, though? They'd still come into...
No, they come into Harrison.
Yeah. I have some questions about this. The traffic study that was done, Mike, was it done on this block or on Fayette as a whole street?
On that block alone.
Okay, well done. 500 cars a day, there's a lot of cars.
May I add that, of those 500, I'm guessing at least 80% are coming into the Old Town Campus.
Actually, the city engineer said 500 cars a day is nothing.
Well, it's not nothing. I mean, it's, it's certainly not much compared to State or Davenport at Washington in Michigan, but, you know, we're talking about, if you assume from 8 o'clock in the morning, let's say, until 8 o'clock at night, and I would bet most of these 500 vehicles would be in that block, that's still...
40 cars an hour?
41 cars an hour.
Yeah, 40 cars an hour.
So, this seems to be a major issue, even when we vacate an alley, you know, we survey all the surrounding homeowners.
In this case, I don't know, with alleys, we do the people who are adjacent to it. And in this case, everybody adjacent is Old Town Christian Outreach.
Yeah, we own both sides of the block.
Well, adjacent would be more than just the buildings on the street in a case where you're closing the street everything.
I just have a question on the map, and I just need a reference point. Anywhere on here, if you could show me where Zorbas is, or Scottish Inn, or... Anywhere on here, if you could show me where Zorbas is, or Scottish Inn, or, um, I just need a little bit more reference.
I'm not sure that I know exactly where that this five hundred block is.
Could you?
On the map, I think I do.
Come up here, sir, and make that clear, cause I think I do know, but we better all be sure. Here's Grashit, here's Mackinac. So that must be the building where your intake is?
Okay, let me get this orientated also up here.
Here's Fayette.
Okay, this is our main campus.
And that's the main building here?
Yep, that's the soup kitchen and that. Over here is the Harrison building, where we intake everything. Uh, this building right in the corner is the one we just purchased.
Yeah.
And we own these two properties here as well. What we're looking at is, um, at a green area in here as well. You're looking at this, we got a green area in here.
What, green area?
Yeah, there in here.
Meaning what?
Oh, having potted trees.
Okay.
And that kinda thing. And then at five twenty-three Mackinac, the only entrance to the building is off Fayette, which is where we can bring our trucks in. Can cross campus, and then also bring trucks in here, unload and load the people's distribution. And you see, there's an entrance here to our main campus. And that's where most of the traffic is coming from into our campus. But they can come out Mackinac, and they can also come in off Harrison.
So this is the block right here that you're talking about?
Yeah.
That's, that's the block?
Right.
Yeah.
I think so.
You know, add the building to it.
It's between the traffic lanes right now.
Yep.
It's between the traffic lanes right now.
Right there. Okay, all right.
What businesses do we have along, what, if we were to do this, what businesses would be affected?
Old Town.
So this is yours here?
This is, this building is one we just bought.
Okay.
These two buildings, we own, we own this whole block here.
Thank you.
Needless to say, we're helping, continuing to help people in the, uh, to say goodnight in that part of the neighborhood.
Oh, I don't think we have any question about the value of your organization to our community, but I really am hesitant to close off a block that's between two major streets. I just don't know.
Well, I'm sure...
I wish we had a better idea, a more precise idea, of where these five hundred cars a day are going.
Well, I think, um, just from my observations, cause I, I go down there on a regular basis into that area. Most of the people, if they're headed east and they're coming south on Fayette, they're gonna turn on Mackinac. Um, there, there may be a few cars that go through on Fayette to, to further south across Grashit, but I wouldn't say that that's a great number of cars. And anybody that wants to go west could get to Grashit from any of those other streets along there. I think that Mr. Burns is correct, that probably a good number of those cars were going into his parking lot. And engineering did not measure that to see what the, what the count was into their lot there.
But we did not do any contact of surrounding businesses in the area?
No, we did not. That's not, our policy is adjacent property owners. We, we didn't contact anybody on Federal Street when we closed that block, except for the Bancroft and, um, the Saginaw News, or whoever owned it at that time.
I don't think there's a viable business in that flat area.
There are...
I might be wrong, but I think they're all vacant now.
So, oh, go ahead.
But there, but there, the point is, I think you've made, is that there are no businesses on either side of that block of South Fayette, except...
Correct.
Old Town.
Mm-hmm.
Any further questions?
How exactly are, are you proposing to close the street down, Mike?
It'd be closed a, a temporary basis. I think the wording is...
What engineering is saying is that they would like to see a permanent barricade that could be taken down if necessary. But, uh, talking to Beth London today, they believe that anything they had to get through, they could go through Old Town's parking lot to get there. And the same with consumers. Consumers has a gas line under the street, power lines over, and there is cable over from the cable company. Uh, there's a water line and a sewer line under the street. So it's, one of the things that you would put into the recommendation is that there would be no building without written city approval. And talking to Beth today, because I had talked to Mr. Burns earlier, and he said, "Well, what if someday we wanted to build over that?" Beth didn't feel that there would be any company that would be opposed to removing that line and routing it a different way. Of course, it'd be up to Old Town Christian Outreach to pay for that. But at this point, there aren't any plans to build on it. That's not the reason that they wanna vacate.
Would that require an appearance back before us?
Um, yeah, for a site plan review, sure.
If you come up, if you come off of Mackinac, uh, come off of Grashit, and go down this part of Fayette right now, does this run right into the company building?
Yes.
Harrison is an emergency block.
Yeah, that's what I'm just saying, the Harrison.
Not Fayette.
I know, but it isn't. But you're gonna affect drugs directly under that street. London, by the county, Princing?
Princing?
Yeah. It will affect that if somebody's coming off of Grashit going down the street. Or it will affect some people leaving, the county going back to Grashit after coming afterwards.
There, there will be some effect on it, there's no doubt about that. But I don't think it's a major point in that they could go a block to the east, get on Michigan and reach the same pharmacy.
Yeah, it's been there.
Or they could take Harrison, which is more of the main route. Harrison's the emergency route, isn't it?
Yep.
It'd be, you know, direct line of this, looking at this, it'd be kinda convoluted, like coming down behind St. Mary's Hospital right now, you gotta, you know, suddenly coming to the parking lot, then you go, gotta go a whole block around and get back by the Princing.
That's true.
I did talk to...
Jefferson, is it not?
Jefferson, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I did talk to Land Bank. They're fine with this idea too, if it makes any difference.
Yes, I did, actually. So you said this is not an emergency route?
No, it is not, it's a, uh, because it's a dead end street, just way two or three blocks to the north.
And then you said Princing, was it located in it?
Princing is right on, I don't know.
North Michigan and Van Buren.
North Michigan and Gen- I'm just saying, if you come off of Grashit, go down to Fayette, you're gonna come into the back.
Or South Michigan.
South Michigan, you're gonna come into the back end of Princing, Princing. And this runs right, this road runs right into the parking lot that the county's over.
And we wouldn't check with Princing to see how they thought about it?
No.
No, that's true.
It's several blocks away.
Several blocks.
Yeah, we're not talking a block.
Not a block, several blocks away.
It's several blocks away.
Well, I mean, but they would have to think about it themselves. I mean, it would affect them regardless of what direction. Their people just wanna get to the pharmacy.
Yeah, i- in that case, you, you can make your way down to South Michigan and take the left, and that would take you right into Princing off of South Michigan. Or if people are coming off... I, I do business at Princing, so I'm, I'm in and out of there on a monthly basis. Or if people are coming down Grashit headed east, they can just turn on Harrison and get to the same street to go over to Princing too.
We don't feel a neg- negatively impact to anybody, really.
What form would the barriers take that we're talking about?
They would be, I'm trying to think of where there is one. What it would be is they'd be in the cement, and then there's a metal bar that runs all the way across. And that can be removed, usually there's padlocks on those to remove. Usually there's padlock on one end and the other end has, and...
Does it big, uh, size roughly what? These are big things, six feet long, three feet high, how, what size are they?
I've seen all different sizes. They're probably three to five feet high.
Is there anyone in the city that we know of, huh?
There is, and I'm trying to remember where I saw.
I can't remember.
I'm thinking there's one around St. Mary's. Maybe one of the streets that dead end into that?
I'm thinking you're right.
Maybe at Meredith where we vacated part of the alley.
Yeah, I think you're right. I don't think Meredith is pretty common.
But in any case, they're, uh, they can be moved with equipment. You can pick 'em up and remove 'em, but if you turn it on...
It'd have to be torn down, but there is a...
Torn down?
Usually there, well, if you wanted to get, if you wanted to get rid of them, but the base of them, each side is into, is, um, into the cement.
Oh, it is?
And then, then there's a hinge on one side of the bar that goes across the street that you can open it up.
Oh.
And then the other end has a, usually a padlock of some type.
So what closes the street is this bar that runs across?
The bar that goes across.
All right, that's not what I was envisioning, so...
Cause they would have to have access to part of those, for their traffic.
Well, no.
Or they could...
He's saying they can use Harrison?
I'm still saying, cause move some of, if they've been moving things over there, they're gonna wanna track down part of the road.
Well, they can go through their part.
They can go through the...
They can access it through the parking lot, yeah.
Of course, to do that, you have to go across Harrison, so...
Mike, I have a question, and the, the comment that you make in your comments, access to the street must be available at all times. What does that mean?
That means that, that if the utilities, let's say it's a Friday night, the utilities need to get into that street, they need to be able to do that. And they could get through it from Harrison through the parking lot over to Fayette. If they really needed to do some work there, let's say they were digging up the street for one, some reason, that's when that barricade could be opened up so that they'd be able to drive their trucks in there without disturbing the parking lot during the day and, and things like that. That's why that part, that barricade would be able to be opened if necessary. But when Beth London sent out notices to the utilities, um, consumers did say that they didn't have any problem going through the parking lot if they needed. Let's say one of their electric lines fell down, they needed to repair it right away, they could go through the parking lot and have access to it immediately.
So in that respect, everything is accessible?
Right, yes.
Then it will be.
Yeah.
And the same barrier type would they have, both ends?
Yes.
And they're responsible for taking care of the snow?
Yes, it's totally up to Old Town to take care of any snow removal in that area. Once it's vacated, except for the easements and, um, the requirement to get approval to build on it, it's owned by Old Town, so they're totally responsible for anything we do there.
Well, for myself, I don't really like it. Cause we do so much of this over a long period of time, and wind up chopping up our city. Places all over are less accessible. Downtown, there's several examples. But I guess I haven't quite heard enough to vote against it. Unless anyone has more to add to our discussion, I guess I will reluctantly support it because I know your organization is a world of good in our community. So I have to think that if I can, I should support whatever you want to do.
Thank you.
Any further comments? If not, once again, I will entertain a motion on this issue. Go.
I'd like to propose a motion, uh, case one seven zero zero two seven, uh, recommendation to city council to vacate the five hundred block of South Fayette, uh, with the understanding no buildings may be constructed without written permission from the city on that property stated.
And?
And...
We'll find it, easements.
Oh, and also, this should include that an easement will be maintained for utilities.
It has been moved, do I hear support for that motion? Support. Been moved and supported, that we approve this case with the conditions stated. All those in favor?
Aye.
The post?
Thank you.
Our next case is recommendation to council for vacating an alley in block forty of Saginaw Improvement Companies Addition I. I never thought of that part of town, thought of that name. So... I drove down there today, and it took me a little while to find it.
Yeah, I did the same thing. I'm on the block about three or four times.
Uh, where is this?
Listen, I grew up over there.
I couldn't find out what happened to Salt Street, and then I realized it went off at an angle.
There isn't much of an alley there, and, uh...
Apparently not.
Actually, the only reason for this vacation, the request for it, is the city has no utilities in that area, neither do any of the, of the other companies that usually would have easements.
It's a no man's land.
The land to the north is owned by the county land bank. The land to the south is privately owned, and the person who is purchasing the land to the south would also like those two lots to the north. And the land bank will not sell it to them unless they're adjacent to this property, therefore the need to vacate the alley.
So what we're talking about here is this whole pink area?
Just the pink area. So we're talking about the east one hundred feet of the west two hundred and fifty feet of the alley. Everything to the east of that, I think part of it was vacated in nineteen forty-one.
I remember that.
And part of it was vacated in seventy-two, I believe it was. So it's been vacated a couple of times. We did not, we decided not to vacate the west two hundred and fif- or hundred and fifty feet. There had been talk of that, but it appears that the owner on Salt Street there does use that alley to get back to one of his garages back there. So we decided not to vacate that.
There's evidence that it's used regularly.
Yeah, it's used.
So it's simply the one hundred feet that they're looking...
Right, the east one hundred.
To vacate, the east one hundred feet.
Can I ask, who is the new owner?
I, Josh Carter, I believe is his name.
And do we know what his intention is for that combined property?
At some point, um, because that is industrial property, at some point, he, he wants to store some vehicles there. So he wants to put a fence up to vacate across that part of the alley. I believe he said, um, I'm trying to remember, I think both to the north and south of that, there are already fences there that the neighbors have put up, or were put up years ago because under our current zoning, if you were in that industrial area... because under our current zoning, if you were in that industrial area, you would have to put a fence up there because it's between the industrial and the residential area. So at some point, he'd like to close that alley just so that no one has access to it.
When you say store vehicles, what does that mean exactly?
Vehicles that he would be using. I, um, I don't remember the type of company that he's talking about. It would not be junk vehicles or anything like that. It's, I believe, yeah, that's owned M1, so it wouldn't allow junk vehicles to anybody in an M1 district. It's more of a light industrial type of business.
How much of that surrounding area is also M1? When you go north of Holmes there, now that's back to residential, is it?
No, actually, north of Holmes is M2, which is heavier industrial. You're right on the edge of the old GM plant that was there.
Malibu?
And I believe the Holmes at the end, wasn't there a dairy or something like that at one point? And I believe that this land might have, to the north of the alley, may have been owned at one time by the people that had the dairy there.
Okay. Well, it's, you know, probably a pretty matter-of-fact thing. You wouldn't want to approve anything that offered any prospect of anything negative on a neighborhood that certainly doesn't mean any more than negative, so... Anything substantial would come before us, I guess, anyway.
Yeah, if it was anything that needed a variance or if it was a site plan, they'd either have to go to you with this on or...
You'd get them. It's only a hundred feet, that's nothing.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the whole thing, but... Any further questions or comments about this issue, Block 40? If not, have a motion to address this issue.
A move that we approve, Case 170026, as written.
Support.
Been moved and supported, that we approve the case. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion denied. Old Business, I just wanted to cover a couple of things here. Eric, did you have anything? Capital Improvement Plan, can you give us an update?
We're still working on it.
Working on it, okay. And maybe we should talk a little bit about our prospects for a new member so that everyone got that same message?
I don't believe everyone did. There was a legal opinion we had questioned regarding whether a non-resident could be a member of the planning commission. We were allowed under state law to have one member that was not a city resident. Yolanda is not a city resident, and she's an ex officio member of the planning commission.
My marker was strong.
She's appointed by the, by the city manager. So as an ex officio member, the legal opinion that came back is that she would not count for a non-resident because she's appointed because of her position in the city.
So therefore...
I just got that notice today.
That's good news. So now, we can all pursue this all over again. If any of you have any especially good prospects, definitely now, we can talk to them. Mr. Nightingale, I believe, could tell us something on that subject?
Yeah, I've already talked to my contact, it's Bentz Brothers, and when I approached him, it was on the assumption that it had to be in-city resident. I will certainly go back to him, as well as I have a contact at Spicer Engineering, and let them know that we can accept the non-resident. And I think between those two companies, there's potential to get somebody on board with us who comes, you know, with the type of background we're looking for. So I will follow up on that.
I will also do one thing. I talked to the people at Wigan Think Now on the same subject, so I will also go back to them and train those efforts, including any others.
We can stay in contact and...
It would be really good to have somebody back on here who asks the questions that...
Yeah.
That Dave Taggart.
Dave Taggart used to ask.
Exactly.
Because we don't always think of those.
And I've been working on an architect from Kibbe Unisociates.
Okay, good.
Well then...
So let's just keep the lines of communication open.
Suddenly, that all got better.
Couple of prospects. What are we thinking as far as having a presentation from Saginaw Future? I know there was talk that they would come in and present to us, is that...
The last I was told is something is in the works, and I don't know what at this point.
But that...
Well, good. I did look at the presentation to Council that you put on the...
I did forward that to Jim, and I tried to forward it to a couple of other folks from the March presentation that they gave before City Council.
That did answer a lot of questions, but not all of mine, so... Okay. We'll look forward to that then.
Absolutely.
I can imagine the presentation that they would give would not be too much different, so any questions that we would have, we can draw from that, from that material, as well as where we are.
Any further business, new, old, or in-between? If not, we are adjourned.